It is six thirty, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda this evening is reviewing approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Anybody have any additions or corrections? Enough to share those with Linda, otherwise I'm looking for a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion?
Yeah. I'll second the motion. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move the minutes. Public hearing for a variance for a Casey sign.
So Casey has submitted their sign plan, which is a sign that's higher than what they wouldn't need a variance for, but it's not as high as they could go under the variance. So they're kind of right in between and this is a process that was developed to allow for some of those highway signs in the area where they're developing. And I think actually when we looked at it, they were just a little bit over the top. Were they like six inches more than what they wouldn't need a variance for? It was very small.
Basically to cover the weather vane on the top of the sign?
Yeah, pretty much. Yes, yep, I think that's what it was.
Do we know what the sign height for a variance is?
Actually, they could go up to...Linda, do you have that offhand?
It would actually be calculated because the Burger King sign, it's since they're in the zone by the highway, it's so far from on the highway where they can see the sign, because the Burger King, I think they got a variance of almost twenty feet. Because it's different when they're within a thousand feet of the four-lane highway, the sign height is increased then.
How tall is the Burger King sign, do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
I was just curious.
It's tall.
I remember. Oh, God, yeah, it's gonna be what, thirty feet?
I remember them coming in.
It was, it's taller than thirty.
Thirty.
It's what?
I think it's sixty or seventy.
Yeah, you were on planning commission at that time.
Yeah, the city council, yeah.
Seventy?
Yeah. It's tall.
They wanted people from the highway to be able to see it. It's a sign that about forty percent of their business comes from drive-through traffic.
Unless there's any additional comments, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any comments they would like to share on this particular variance, if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Dustin Thompson, any actual address for this city here? Alexandria.
What is your name, Linda?
Your city address, or is it a business?
Yes.
Okay, what's your?
Ringdahl Architects, R.I.N.G.D.A.H.L. So you've got the sign package in front of you, this is their kind of standard sign that they would use for an application as such. As noted, it does exceed the variance height requirements for what we're zoned for, for the area. Just looking for your guys' approval to utilize this sign in this location. And I think it's just the pylon sign, all the other stuff has been approved, the canopy and all that stuff's been approved with you guys' planning and zoning department. We have any questions, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything they would like to share? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Any thoughts to share? Burger King kind of set the bar. I'll take off to turn somebody down given what Burger King's done.
I have no issues with it. I'll move to approve the variance.
I'll second it.
Got the motion, we've got a second. Any other comments or thoughts? Question, do we know where it's going on the site?
Yes, we do.
That should be in that packet too, there should be a little map there.
South East Corner, but I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, Southeast Corner.
Oh, it's on this one.
I remember from the CUP. I remember that, but the CUP, because we had some questions about site triangles and stuff with the entrance of the road.
This one's ten feet up in the air before you get to the first sign, so it's gonna be an issue, but just thought I'd ask the question. It should be above any traffic. Any additional comments or questions? Still have a motion, we have a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All set, take care of your tickets. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing, reviewing the preliminary plat for the Thompson addition.
I'd like to recuse myself.
was handed out to you tonight. So after the staff planning review, we had actually, but the final lot had a lot, plat had a lot thirteen, it looks like the amended submission here has a lot thirteen and fourteen, so we can amend that. It shows thirteen and fourteen as a hundred and five feet wide, which appears to include the entire house. It was our understanding that the one oh eight, that had been the minor subdivided lot, had allowed for the six and a half feet side setback at the time that Rich Massey did the minor subdivision. However, this is a planned unit development, so that side yard setback can be buried. But I just wanted to make you aware of that. And then, so there would be a lot thirteen and a lot fourteen then on the final plat. And they would be one oh five along essentially. And it looks like the revision to the private drive is on the resubmission. So I can make those changes to the recommended resolution for the city council. Do you have any other specific questions in regards to the staff comments or anything that you've seen?
So is it true the current driveway remains?
No.
It's still in the going way.
Yeah, it's just kind of showing you where it is currently. I believe that was the condition of the conditional use permit was the single drive.
I have a question there. I think I talked about that drive width, sixteen feet. I was just thinking about, like, if someone has a party and they have their friends over, why don't they park?
Well, just like if they come to my house now, they all park on the street, if everybody's coming over.
Yeah.
They can park on the street around the outside, plus they can, you know, the ordinance basically says that you can have only your own cars, two cars parking in front for the association, so based on that, you'll be parking out on the street anyways, so.
I'm just thinking about the width of that drive, especially, you know, like this time of year, when it gets, they get smaller and smaller with all the snow.
Push that snow back starting in the beginning.
Yeah, because if you had someone parked there, you're only gonna have about eight feet or so to be to get around there.
And there would be no parking on that private drive.
Okay.
You know, and the challenge is, is the driveways are twenty foot deep, so if you make the drive wider, or the private drive wider, the driveway to get shorter, and nobody seems to be dragging smaller vehicles.
So you're gonna have signs on the streets saying no parking?
Yep.
Okay.
And it'll be a part of the association.
Okay.
Do you have those put together already?
In the process. They should be done before the final plat, which is not happening.
They're like a seventy-five page document that we're going through to make sure that we've covered all of the things that we need to.
The only reason I ask is because that would be one of my concerns from a fire department standpoint as well, is with a year like this.
Yes.
And if there's cars parked down there, there's, you know, you park one car in there, there's, we're pushing cars out of the way to try and get a truck through there, so.
And part of it is, there is no really any room to park unless somebody parked in front of the driveway, because even the areas in between the driveways are not even twenty feet, so.
The snow is essentially gonna have to be all the way.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of room to...
A lot.
To push there, yeah. Hopefully, we don't have fifty inches of snow every year.
Gentlemen, unless you, anyone has any questions? No? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any comments they would like to say on the preliminary plat for the Thompson addition, if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium again, change, share your name and address.
So we are Erin and Sonia Thompson, 504 Sixteenth Street, Northeast Casson. I was just gonna go through the staff planning letter real quick, just to really clarify some stuff. Teresa already clarified the lot. The reason I went one oh five is that means that the lot line is five feet away from the west side of the building. I could definitely move it over more if I, if I needed to, but I was just trying to keep the private drive as straight as possible, so. The zoning clerk provides sidewalk along the north's frontage road. The property is graded for a sidewalk, and just with discussions of the safe routes to school, I guess I'd like that sidewalk or bike paths or whatever ends up going in there to be at that time. I just really worry that if we end up putting it in ahead of time, and I only bring it over to my property line, students and bikers are gonna turn that corner, come to the end, and they'll just dart right across the road, you know, or end up, you know, if they're traveling west, they're gonna be, you know, biking against traffic. But we did make sure it was all graded for that in the future. Parkland fees, I guess I wanted to verify that those, I was told when I purchased the property that the parkland fees and any fees were paid during the last bringing it into the, doing the lots that were prior.
Yeah, the density has changed significantly since the last submission.
Are parkland fees based on green, on total area, or are they based on dwelling units, or?
Dwelling units?
No, it's based on, we calculate it based on the area.
The overall area, and the overall areas increased from?
Well, the number of, the density of residential units has, on that area has increased from five or six to, let me, from five to potentially fourteen.
Okay.
So it's more than doubled.
So, was there parkland fees paid?
I will have to go, I'll have to take a look.
Okay, if the parkland fees were paid for five, then he should only owe for nine at most?
So you're recommending, and you guys can clean this up at the time of the motion.
Right.
You could do that.
If, if they were paid.
But are they based on area or dwellings?
They're calculated based on area.
Okay, but the area's not changing?
The density is changing. It gives, it gives the city council and the planning commission an opportunity to address the increase in density regarding parkland fees.
So it's based on area and density?
It's calculated based on area. The density allows the council and the planning commission to readress.
Can we see how it's calculated?
It's calculated based on the area, so, and the formula is based on a value of eight thousand dollars per acre, which may or may not currently be the case, but ten percent of the value of the acreage, which we're using eight hundred dollars as ten percent of an eight thousand dollar value, and taking that times the number of acres. That's the calculation.
But that still doesn't address density, that only addresses area, so is there something in some sort of?
This is a replat.
Right, is that, is that written somewhere that we can see how it's actually calculated?
It's in the fee schedule.
Okay.
That's exactly how it is in the fee schedule. It says that it's calculated based on ten percent of an assumed value of eight thousand dollars an acre, times the number of acres. That's exactly how it's calculated.
So the answer to the question versus density over area is the value. If the value of the land went up more than the eight thousand dollars, then the calculation would adjust accordingly.
So who's?
When does that valuation take place, because right now the value has not changed from the original?
And that's an assumed value, that, like I said, that's a value for the purpose of the calculation. It's not, we're not actually appraising land value to arrive at the parkland fee.
According to the preliminary plat?
No.
No.
No, the eight thousand dollars is just an assumed value that's been in the fee schedule for a very long time.
So because...
For the purpose of the fee schedule, we're using the eight thousand dollar per acre value.
So because it's being replatted, we're paying parkland fees again?
There is an opportunity for the planning commission and the council to reevaluate the parkland fees.
Okay, 'cause I just, when I purchased the property, that was all included in, you know, when we did the purchase from that standpoint, so, okay.
I think the general theory is because of the higher density, the more population that you would have utilizing the parkland, and so you create the amenities to provide that amenity to that density.
Okay. So how, as I as a consumer, know what I'm getting myself into on parkland fees?
That's part of this discussion.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and it is in the fee schedule.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Are sack and, or whack and sack fees paid at the time of the final plat, or are they paid at the time of building permits?
They are paid at the time of the final plat.
Okay. And so there's already been sack and whack fees paid on five lots, so then it would only be the other nine?
That would be, there would be an opportunity for the planning commission and the council to make that determination at this time.
Okay.
We'll have a few things to discuss. I'm in the public hearing.
The hydrant location was changed, I mean, your packet, it's about halfway up, and based on just getting it out of the way for snow removal and different things, we did move it to the end, better for cleaning and all of that, so. When I talked to my two, my two bidders, they said no cost, no cost change. But is the hydrant cost covered by the city? I thought I remember Joe saying something about that at one of our other meetings or something, that if a hydrant was required, it was, I misheard. That's fine.
That's all I mean, nice and just have you put one in.
That's fine, yep, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna, you know, so. And the fire chief does approve the turnaround at the end?
Yeah, that's all, that's all good to do.
And then the only other question I have on the executive development agreement, just based on how we're looking to build this, our financing has been put in place to cover the private drive and start building two townhomes, and then as those sell, we will continue to build other ones. And so I'm just wondering about the executive agreement from, you know, basically a letter of credit from the bank questioning, you know, covering whatever is started in a foundation to be completed, from that standpoint. Because my intention is not to come in and just start and build all twelve, my intention is to come in and start building, and as they sell, continue to build. I don't think anybody wants a bunch of buildings that are just left empty because they can't be sold, and if they're not sold, then they'll just become rentals, and I don't know if that's what everybody wants either, is just everything to be rentals up there. So we're looking at a mix of the two, but building is the demand.
Do you anticipate building front to back or back to front?
I anticipate building from, I'm gonna call it the south to the north. So we would start with either, you know, the two on the very end, and then just from a logical standpoint, work to the north, so we don't get locked in by the, you know, the school's got a fence back there and a few other things, so.
So lots nine and ten or eight or seven?
Yeah, those would be started, yep.
And the planning commission doesn't need to make a determination based on the development agreement or how the letter of credit will be structured, the council will come to that agreement with the developer.
That's really all that we have to present, if somebody has any questions, they'd be happy to answer.
Just one other question, with the plan to build only two to start with, and then build as financing is available, I'm assuming, that I'll get your affirmation, that you maintain the green space and everything?
Yes, yes, yep. I mean, we, we plan to continue to treat it as our yard, you know, we got a kid who's gotta learn his driver's training, and a tractor seems to be a good way to learn how to get about it, so. Most definitely, I mean, we are, we are living there.
Yeah.
We're not gonna, you know, we've got places for all the fill to go, so no fill will be left on site, it'll, you know, be maintained the best possible. And then this document is just a vacating of the existing easements from the previous plat, so that was not included in the packet, but I brought it with, so. Discussions between our engineer and Brandon were to just go through and vacate those easements.
I'm good.
You're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment?
Well, I'm Trent Langemo, 1400 Second Avenue Circle, Northeast, in Casson. As a resident of Second Avenue Circle, certainly, and also fully understanding the need for housing in Casson, and probably a little bit late to the game here, the consensus from, in our neighborhood at least, to the several neighbors I talked to, kind of representing several folks tonight, was that, I guess what we had heard all along was a four townhomes, and we kind of thought that makes sense, and then we got this notice last week, and kind of figuring out then that we're talking twelve or more, fourteen, in the hearing tonight. Question about if the council or the board has considered that that traffic in that area in the mornings between seven-thirty and eight-thirty, and the afternoons between two-thirty and three-thirty, and if there's a concern about access and traffic and that number of vehicles being introduced to that Sixteenth Street and Fifth Avenue. Access to safety, safer routes to schools for our children in that neighborhood is very difficult the way it is, even though being very close to school, there is not a safe way to the elementary or middle school unless you walk through the school property. So I guess just the question about is there going to be additional access? Granted, I was looking at the document there, it doesn't look like it, so the access stays on two Sixteenth Streets?
Yes, yep, and this actually is an improvement over a previous replat, which allowed for five drives, I think, and then gets left to one.
So the original plan was five, and this one is down to one?
Yeah.
Okay. And so upwards, am I hearing that right, just so I can share back to people that are concerned, fourteen possible townhomes?
There will be fourteen, there will, there are twelve townhomes, fourteen lots. Twelve townhomes on this plat.
And a mixture of for sale and for rent?
That's not, is that?
That's just what I heard just now, so.
I thought they were for sale.
They're for sale.
Yes.
I didn't know what happens when something doesn't sell, and somebody says, can I rent that?
The intent is for sale.
Okay, those are just my questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Brown, 1404 Second Avenue Circle, Northeast. Just kind of wanted to echo Trent and share some concerns that we have in our cul-de-sac, which has been an exclusively residential neighborhood. We used to live across the street in Second Avenue Circle, and we built our house in 2012, so we could remain in the school district but enjoy the residential neighborhood. And this feels like putting a giant apartment building in our backyard. We have a middle school or an elementary school that, like Trent said, have to walk to school every day, and are currently cutting right through that area to get to their schools. And so we're very concerned about safe access to schools. We're concerned about what having a large complex in our backyard is gonna do to our property value. Trent also mentioned traffic congestion, I don't know if any of you have to drop kids off at the elementary school or the middle school in the morning, but there are days in the elementary school drive-through where you are stuck in the drive-through because traffic is backed up all the way through it, out to the road. So adding that many more vehicles to that scenario. And now, an additional concern raised tonight, sounds like we're going to be in for a very prolonged construction project, if they're going to build units as they sell, so that could be stretching out for quite some time, also a dis... So that could be stretching out for quite some time, also disrupting the residential part of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Aaron Thompson, just to respond to some of those comments. We do live in the, in the brick house on the corner, so we do understand these concerns. Actually, when we went to go purchase the property, there was a proposal to put two 24-unit apartment buildings there. And if we would not have bought the property, that's probably what would have been pushed forward. And so we felt very obligated to keep that as a residential area. We also knew that five driveways were going to be very conflicting. And so we felt by putting in the one drive and being able to get it a little bit more center located instead of all five different driveways being on that property, that we were definitely improving the situation. And also looking to say, you know, we need affordable housing for single moms with kids. And that's, you know, that has been our target market the whole time. So here we've got kids that can walk directly to school and don't have to be driven. That'd be a thought, so just thought I'd share those.
Any other comments to share? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you all. Best place to start?
Sidewalk. I have said this myself several times. I've, my feeling is that putting in a sidewalk is a waste of time because it is going to go nowhere. It's going to end unless everybody, we force everybody to put a sidewalk in, pay for it. I still think that should be part of safe routes to school. There should be a bike path on the south side, just like on the north side because there's just as many kids come out of the cul-de-sacs, they go to all the schools and giving them a safe route all the way through there and making it a city bike path is the way to go. I, that's my feeling. And I, I will push that until doomsday. I think that's the way to go.
I agree. Trail, sidewalk, you know, I can go either way with that. But to have a route, especially with the improvement plan for 16th Street all the way to going to 15 occurring this year, that traffic will increase, the density will increase. So we need to have, you know, some traffic controls, whatever they may be, along with the sidewalk or trail on the south side along with the north side needs to occur. Now, how we do that, whether we do it as part of this or make it a contingent of this, seems to make sense that we get it and then we push to get it extended further west. Or doing it all at once, that's to be debated yet.
I think there was some discussion with Brandon about putting a push button crosswalk?
You know, we, we actually will have an opportunity to do a demonstration project on that corner and I can definitely mention that at our meeting this month.
Because I, I know kids will not look sometimes and they will just take right off across. I have granddaughters that cross that thing all the time. They drive me nuts.
I, I can anticipate when we talked about parking, parking on the street, that near that intersection, I, I can anticipate that there's going to be some distance away from that intersection that we're going to have to require no parking, you know, to provide for sight distance and things. So that, you know, would limit to some degree the street parking.
Neither, kind of already voiced my concerns about the width of that private drive there. I do think that, you know, even restricting the parking, having people park, you know, if they come in over to visit, you know, on the street, if there's, you know, arts gathering, something like that. Only people are going to do that, you know. I think it's just going to be, because, you know, if you're going all the way down to lot eight or nine, that's, you know, 300 some odd feet to walk. No one's really going to push it that far. They're probably, they're going to park in front of their friend's house. So it's going to be kind of tough to enforce it and keep up with that. On the other side of the coin is the private drive. But I think, I think it's going to be problematic. Because also on 5th Avenue, you've got such a steep grade. Becoming of that, park on the other side. And how many people are going to want to park on that side, so.
Do we have the ability or the opportunity to put in some sort of a walk from that private drive to 5th Avenue? You're going to have a trail there?
Well, I mean, right now, there, there is no walking across our, our property. Everybody walks up the cul-de-sac and directly to the middle school from that standpoint. So, I mean, there is 10 feet there. You know, there, part of it would be sidewalk and some steps or something like that to be able to make it happen, you know, from that standpoint. And, and every project you, you know, the only, the only time people follow the walks is when the snow covers everywhere else that they're supposed to walk, so. That's, I mean, it's definitely been some thoughts from that standpoint. But just the people that we've talked with have said, you know, the amount of, you know, parking where people show up is pretty minor and this is, you know, it's going to be a close knit neighborhood more than likely with everybody sharing that drive right there. And really, I mean, I, I would, I would increase the drive, but then that means that the driveways are only going to be 16 feet deep instead of 20 and nobody pulls right up to a garage door. So you're always going to have back ends of the vehicles hanging out. And if they're hanging out into a driveway, I see you got a lot more potential problems of, you know, well, jeepers, you had your car parked out in the driveway.
Where would you put it like that? What would you commit it to? That's tough when you're looking at just a single parcel.
You're talking on the north side?
I'm trying to understand where your head is at with like that.
From this corner? All the way down to at least that first cul-de-sac? I'd like it to go all the way to the corner, 57, but that kind of depends on what we're going to do with the roundabout, all the other heavy stuff.
I was going to ask if there's any update on those conversations?
Not that I know of.
Not, not yet. And we're revisiting the mill and overlay plan. Brandon was starting to get the impression that our project would be the project. Rather than mill and overlay all the way between Casson and Manorville. So we're revisiting that. If they were going to mill and overlay from 11th all the way to Manorville, then we would try to get them to not spend their money on new pavement without going back to the drawing board.
At least to the first cul-de-sac. And from the cul-de-sac to the roundabout or whatever went back would happen. Because that might change, it might skew 16. There's a lot of things that could happen.
Because I see that having a pretty profound impact on the traffic patterns at the school.
With 16th opening up all the way to 15, that's going to lighten traffic up by the school too because there's a lot of people coming out of the north area there. This guy here, he's going to head for 15 instead of coming back to 57. It's, it's going to, it's not going to cure it forever, but it's going to lighten it up. It will.
And there is no crosswalk at the next cul-de-sac right now. There isn't, there is no cross. So even if you do run something to there, they're still just jutting across the road.
But there is a crosswalk, isn't there, at the very first?
No, it's, well, yeah, yeah.
The very first, that's what I meant, take the bike path all the way to the very first.
Right.
There should be a crosswalk out of our cul-de-sac. Because everyone from the middle school comes from over there to Haskett High School after school.
I, I don't have the safer routes to the school plan in front of me, but that was absolutely identified.
There is one at the first.
Yeah, but the middle schoolers are jumping right there.
You also want to be careful putting too many crosswalks in because then, then you're never going to get off of 16th Street. Because the kids will continuously come across.
They're already crossing.
Oh, I know.
There's a police officer that sits there every day.
Yep.
You get, how do those get put in place, crosswalks?
We actually will do that. We have an opportunity to do a few demonstration projects this spring, so I will add that to my push button crosswalk. I will add that crossing at Second.
So by demonstration projects, you mean put in a crosswalk and say this is what a crosswalk is going to look like?
Uh, or put up some cones or...
Temporary.
Put out a crossing guard or something and see how it works. Something like that. To say, is there a way this would work?
Yeah, whatever happened to the crossing guards? Flight patrol?
They had them back in the 80s.
Twelve of them got run over.
That's right.
Too many of them go to Arizona.
No, you got the kid to do it.
Yeah, sixth graders.
There you go, different sixth graders.
Meandering a little bit. I, I guess we've never really talked a lot about fees at the planning and zoning level. That's always kind of been the domain of the city and city council. So I, I don't feel like I can sit here and add much to that conversation because I'll be honest with you, I don't know if I understand the fees well enough to be able to find them and explain them to somebody. If you want to have the conversation here, we can, but I think ultimately that's a permeable city council.
The council does suck the fee schedule, so that would be their decision.
As long as it's consistently applied, not overly subjective?
Right. Is that understandable, it would be brought up between, for city council?
That'd be Wednesday night?
Yes, well, given the body sense of recommendations, the council, it will be Wednesday night.
Can I ask, do you feel more comfortable knowing that we're going to try to make this safer for the kids and with 16th going out to 15, it'll lighten up the traffic somewhat? Does that?
It helps with one of the concerns. Is that going to happen concurrently to the buildings going up?
Right. Yeah, but your addition was a new addition to it one time and people were concerned about too many houses going in there.
It's strictly residential, it's not...
This is residential. This is not commercial, this is residential.
But if you add 12 units there, say four people per unit, you're talking 50 people in a area that is quite a bit smaller than our cul-de-sac.
First Avenue Circle houses, Second Avenue Circle houses, the one between Second Avenue Circle and their house is a single family home.
Right.
And everywhere along the elementary school road is single family homes.
The only thing I have to counter that with is this town is lacking two townhomes badly, so badly.
I agree, but I don't know why we have to shove it on a, a single lot that is big enough for a big house, basically, in an extremely congested area.
It's maybe bigger than you picture.
Oh, yeah.
We've lived there, we, for 15 years, we know.
Cut through the back there.
We've lived there for 15 years too. We live right around the corner.
So you know how busy it gets then?
Oh, yes, yeah, we do.
Yeah, but it's... At the noise level of adding that many apartments, it's just going to really change the whole...
But it's not apartments.
Townhomes.
It's townhomes.
And if you, when you talked about parking, if there's a football game going on or a baseball game going on or a concert at the high school and that 16th Street is lined up both sides with cars, there will be absolutely nowhere for guests of those townhomes to park. If people start parking in our cul-de-sac?
Yep. There's a school parking lot.
I live in a cul-de-sac and my neighbor across the street seems to need a trailer, two cars that he doesn't drive, and they have two cars. So most of the time, they're parking on the street. That drives me nuts, but it's, it's the way it is. You know, I, I don't like it either, I, I don't. But that's the nature of the beast. I wish I could say that I agree with you 100%, but I, I can't. I, this is still residential, where it's not commercial. They are people just like you, you and your husband.
I absolutely understand that and I want Casson to have affordable housing. It just is such a congested area to start with.
I understand, I do.
Kids everywhere in the area, cutting across all different streets.
My concern is the sidewalk. You know, I, I like the opportunity to do something in the spring, but it'd be nice if we had something that was a little more concrete. Not that this project should necessarily hinge on getting something like that done, but I also feel that we're looking at adding up potentially, you know, a pile of people. I don't think it's going to take as long to get all these built as probably you're expecting. Because it is a huge need in our community to, for this, for this type of housing. I think they're going to go quickly. And, and with the designs that I've seen, I think that it's going to be a huge, a huge issue. I have concerns about the parking on the street. We have issues already with trying to police private drive areas in our community because we have no say. You know, it, yes, you can put covenants together and ordinance together and have your tenants or homeowners have vitals, signals, but who polices it? Because nobody polices it until it pisses them off. So if everybody's doing it, then it's not a big deal, but...
I think, I mean, us living there, we have a little bit more say when people buy them, when people are doing things that, you know, we can definitely... But I may not live there forever. So I mean, just trying to, yeah, so. Just, I wanted to just get rid of, we're not opposed to paying for and putting a sidewalk in. I just don't want it to go to a dead end. I want the sidewalk to nowhere.
Well, and that's what I, and that's, and that's kind of what I'm getting at. Like, if, if we're going to say that that has to go in, whether it's a sidewalk or a bike path or something, then that conversation needs to be brought up with all the way to, you know, Highway 57. And those, those things have to be done all at the same time is, is my, you know. That's, that's my, my thought on, because it doesn't, it doesn't do any good. It does no good. We've got a thousand sidewalks that go nowhere in this town. And I realize that sidewalk issues are huge and that's a council issue. It has been for, forever. But I, I, I just think that that's, that's, that's got to get, that's got to get dealt with, so.
I can have Brandon put some numbers together for the council.
Yeah. The sidewalks in this area is a lot easier to justify than in some of the northwest or northeast sections of the town.
Definitely.
So I, I don't have any concerns about justifying sidewalks in this area and getting that done. Particularly with the safe routes to school on the agenda. So, you know, certainly parking is the issue. But, you know, people are just going to get their exercise. I initially had some concern about the density, but, you know, I would go back to the comprehensive plan that we just put together and the, the city had mentioned that they needed and wanted these type of developments in, in or off the store. And that's what we approved the CUP on, so, you know, I have to fall back on the comprehensive plan as the wish of the city that we have these places created.
I got a strange question, but I'm going to ask it. Does law enforcement have any right to go down a private drive and police it? Well, police it, yeah, to the extent that they're enforcing it.
I do not know.
But I mean, if they put up no parking signs and somebody's parked...
They don't police the, they don't police the private drive at the school. Why would they police a private drive in this?
I was just wondering, like Marty's addition down there.
On Abbey Lane?
Abbey Lane.
I, I cannot answer that question. I do not know the answer to that question.
I was just curious, if they have no parking signs and somebody calls the police and complains, do they have the right to go up there and ticket them?
Yeah, that's interesting because when they call in, like, you know, want to complain about stuff on that property and tell them that that's the property of the homeowners with the location as well.
I would hope they follow a fire truck, if somebody needs a... I would hope they follow a fire truck, if somebody needs a fire truck. I sure hope the fire truck goes on my private drive, and so the police would follow the same...
No, I keep just saying to make sure it's being cleared.
Right.
I don't believe the parking is enforceable by the city.
Yeah, I can't answer that question.
We'll have someone over there. I live there.
Because I have to believe it's the same as the parking issues like in the Rome Devol deal at the elementary school. There's no parking signs in there, there's a thousand of them in there, and there's people that park there all the time. And the comment that I have always received is, there's nothing they will do about it until the school calls and says somebody's illegally parking in a no parking zone at the school. It doesn't matter if it's a private citizen that drives through there and somebody's parking there. They won't do anything until the school calls. So I would have to believe that this being a private drive, the police would not do anything unless it was one of the homeowners living in there that said someone is illegally parking in a no parking zone in our private drive, and that at that point, they would...
I was just curious.
Yeah.
That's one heckle way to meet your neighbors, though.
I was thinking about it.
Touched on the fees, touched on bike path. Is there anything else we need to discuss?
So the... Has Brandon looked at this for consideration in the final flat?
Yes, and he has forwarded comments.
Okay.
Aaron, correct.
The only comments I got were out of my own planning book, otherwise I never signed on my planning package.
Okay, we'll get comments.
I never received anything else.
We will get Brandon's comments to Aaron before the final flat. And we did, I did include on the resolution that the city engineers review the site plan prior to the final flat.
On the reason I asked, we've got a second or third public hearing here to...
Right, the final.
Regarding the final flat.
Yeah, and we do not have a complete final flat application at this time.
So we table the final flat?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. But we can still hold a public hearing on it?
No, we will probably remove it, remove that, remove that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I guess with all of that said, we need to wrap this into some sort of...
Right, so I did put a potential resolution that would go to council. So the second item I have changed to the final flat is to conclude Lot Thirteen and Fourteen. I'll put as pictured, unamended flat. Is there anything else there that you want me to edit in any way before it goes to council for consideration?
Do we go on sidewalk or bike path on Sixth and Street?
I think it should match what's on the north side. The two-minute bike path. That way, everything's consistent.
Whose job is it to keep those clean?
Aaron Thompson, I think.
I'm just asking in general, because there's a lot of, I mean, I do know who keeps them clean, but...
Both the school and the city, as they can, put step on that particular...
I mean, I know who takes care of it, because I see him out there, but I just wanted to make sure of that.
Right, but it, you know, they've had other priorities up late.
They've always been done good, so I mean, that's not an issue.
So between the school and the city.
Okay.
Can we work some verbiage in here about getting the crosswalk project addressed at the same time?
No, but I think we'll talk about it. Yeah, we'll talk about it, but I don't think we'll add that specific.
Insofar as this is a recommendation?
Yes.
I would recommend we do these things.
Okay.
Being inclined to recommend.
Would it be appropriate to add language in here consistent with the comprehensive plan? Based on the same reasoning for the CUP?
Up above in the whereas?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I can do that.
And the dimensions, you got changed at One-O-Five, right?
Yeah, yes, I will modify that.
So with all those changes that we have outlined, and I'm assuming Linda's got a record, I will move to approve the resolution recommending to the council approval of the preliminary flat for Thompson addition?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any additional comments? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Preliminary flat, please.
So now, just because I know you guys have had some questions in regards to the process on this. So this was the preliminary flat, which will go to council for them to add any questions, comments, thoughts. Then the final flat after that will come back to us to approve. They should get another notice?
You will receive a notice when we reschedule the public hearing for the final flat.
So there'll be another opportunity like this for people to speak up in regards to their thoughts and comments. Also, there'll be the preliminary at the city council meeting, and then the final at the city council meeting, we get this board approves it to go to the city council. Just so you have an idea of...
Right, and at the city council meeting, there will be a comment card out front, and you fill out the comment card ahead of the meeting to be heard at the city council.
At the city council, yep.
Taking a bit of a pause detour, there always seems to be some questions about how we communicate. Public hearings, I realize we put it in the paper, I realize we mail things.
Yes.
There's always somebody that says, you know, this is the first I've heard about it. Is there anything else we can do to improve communication of these projects to the public at large?
I don't know.
It comes up every year.
Yeah, well, every single one that we have, it gets brought up.
Right, right. So we go to the GIS, pull all of the property owners, so that can be a snafu, so to speak. If the property owner does not live at the property address and someone else is living at that address, it's the property owner who gets it.
We usually try, if it's a small enough list, I've usually tried to cross check it against utilities.
Okay.
But if everybody within three hundred and fifty feet of the property gets a notification in the mail. And then it is put in the newspaper for everyone.
Right, so the requirement is to publish it ten days ahead, but because it's a weekly paper, it actually ends up getting published like fourteen or twenty-one, or it depends on how the month falls.
Depends on how the month falls. But it's at least ten days ahead.
Communication is always an issue.
Okay.
And at some point, people have to assume some responsibility for getting their own communication.
I just want to be able to look everybody in the face and say, we've done everything we can do to... It's more of a personal thing than a criticism of anybody or anything.
No, agreed.
Do we need to comment on the final flat outside of...
No, that it will come back to you in the future.
No further action on that? You don't need to vote to that effect?
No, I'm sorry, I probably should have brought it up, you know, before you got started, but since we don't accept the agenda on this agenda, why don't we get to the agenda?
It's only been that way for ten years now.
Okay.
A table decision for the preliminary flat, Stone Ridge Second.
So, let's see, if I remember correctly, there was a requirement on that preliminary flat for stormwater management, and the developer had asked to address that with the council. They actually have made a formal request to address the council on Wednesday, so the council will have that comment. And because that's part of the development and the development agreement going forward, it would be appropriate for you to go ahead and recommend the preliminary flat for approval and for the council to hear that discussion at their regular meeting. And I believe that was really the only concern maybe that was raised following that public hearing.
Yes.
So it's just time for you to make a decision on whether or not to recommend... Oh, do you want to say something, David? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
No, since we were here the last time, Mr. Marty and Mr. Shute have gotten together several times, and agreement is in the process of being prepared. I believe the attorneys are still on vacation.
He's on vacation.
But they both come to a mutual agreement, and what we're pursuing is essentially two options. What I would call Option A would be a larger regional pond down in the existing drawl, which would encompass part of the county property and a piece of Mr. Shute's property. But that is contingent on existing wetlands, which we're not going to be able to determine until springtime, and some other potential factors. But we do have a backup plan that if that does not move forward as we anticipate, then we are going to do upon on Mr. Shute's property just for Stone Ridge and Stone Ridge Second. That's what the agreement is, so everybody has some level of comfort that a pond is going to be there. It's just a matter of is it going to be the larger regional pond or the smaller pond at this point in time. But I guess one thing I'd like to talk about, and I know I talked, I believe Brandon and I discussed this already, it's a pretty minor comment, but it's the grade, the existing trail easement on Outlet A.
Yeah.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
And Outlet A seems pretty graded already, pretty fairly approachability for a trail. I just, I guess if Brandon reviews the plans and he feels we need to grade it, that's one thing, but I just don't want to get tied into grading it if it's not a hundred percent necessary.
Yeah, I think really the comment was because we know construction is going to be taking place, that when the construction is done, that the trail grade be there.
Be there.
Right, so I'm sure you can work that out with Brandon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other than that, we are already aware of all the other stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the city does own land for a trail that's north of the Methodist Church and south of this development?
Any additional comments, gentlemen?
I brought my packet from last night, that's for reference. So I have my notes from the last meeting. And one of my notes was for like a trail access, was that what you were talking about there? On the Eighth Avenue, in between Lots Five and Six.
That was where the utility easement was.
There was discussion, I took away from that discussion, that there was not agreement on requiring it.
That's what I understood too.
Having apparently two properties...
Not on the resolution.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why it's not on the resolution, because I understood there was not an agreement among the planning commission members. So you're right, it was a staff report.
Guess if anything else, we need a motion.
Are we making a motion to approve the preliminary flat?
I have a motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Revocation of the Wilker conditional use permit.
Let me find my notes starting in... Okay, so in 2010, a conditional use permit was issued for the property that Mr. Wilker currently owns. And that conditional use permit was for a nursery and landscape business and had specific conditions, eight specific conditions on that conditional use permit from 2010. At your meeting on July ninth, there was a discussion about that conditional use permit, and the recommendation from the planning commission was for the council to direct me to write a letter to Mr. Wilker in regards to his noncompliance with the 2010 conditional use permit. So I did send him a letter on July twelfth, which I think was, it's in your packet.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, excellent. And then the planning commission met again on August sixth, which was before the thirty days that Mr. Wilker had been provided to come into compliance with the conditional use permit. So there was no action taken on August sixth. And then Mr. Wilker did not come into compliance within thirty days. So on your meeting on September tenth, there was a public hearing regarding revocation of the conditional use permit, at which time it was asked if we wanted to start a conversation, how would the conversation take place? And no action was taken. And at that time, the statement was that his attorney should contact the city attorney, which did happen, and the letter from the attorney was discussed with the council in a closed session at their council meeting, but it was not brought to the public, it was not made public at that time. But the city attorney has provided me with a copy of the confidential settlement offer that was provided at the time, and there's still no compliance with the 2010 conditional use permit. So you held a public hearing, the property is not in compliance with all eight of the conditions, and so this has come back to you for an action.
So my question would be is, we've had conversations, our city attorney has made what I'm assuming is a recommendation to our city council in a closed meeting. Why didn't the city council just take action? Why is it coming back to us?
The city council cannot make a recommendation to itself on how to act. The city council cannot make a recommendation to itself on how to act, how to...
Proceed.
Whether or not to revoke the conditional use permit. So, this has come back to you to make a recommendation to the council. Essentially, the letter from the attorney, from Mr. Wilker's attorney, how much do I say, Lani?
If I may, you said there was a settlement letter. What did you...
Right. She provided a letter that she titled "A Confidential Settlement Offer Protected by Rule 408 of the Minnesota Rules of Evidence." And she at that time had offered the city basically an opportunity, she had offered the city council, who does not have authority to grant a conditional use permit without a recommendation from planning commission, she offered the city council an opportunity to grant Mr. Wilker a new conditional use permit.
Did the city respond in any...
Yes, the city attorney did respond, and the city council was not able to fill their request to provide a new conditional use permit because that is not the city council's. The city council can't arbitrarily grant conditional use permits. I think I did okay without... Okay, nothing wrong. So, here you are.
It's still, I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
If I may. Please, do you have more to add to this whole?
My take on it is the city has gone out of their way to provide an opportunity to Mr. Wilker to become compliant or to approach the city with a different option, and he has chosen not to take any of those options.
Above and beyond.
Yep.
Why not? I have no idea. I really don't. For everything that was asked of him and what he has available to him, he could have cured this in no time himself. But the picture is going to get painted that we're out to get him. I mean, that's...
That's already been painted.
Yes. But I think we've given him plenty of opportunity. I mean, we've went above and beyond, like I said, to try to make this work, and he has not made any effort whatsoever.
Given him nine years.
Yeah. I mean, he's, when somebody went out to check to see if he was in compliance, he almost threatened trespassing.
I believe that was me, I walked through there.
I believe it was, sir.
Yeah. No reason to deny it.
Oh, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, if he really wanted to try, he would be working with the city to make this work.
So, what are the next steps if, I understand, it's to revoke the conditional use permit, and the city council agrees to that? What stops him from just continuing to do things as he's been doing? I mean, what's the next step after that?
Then the city will take action.
Civil action.
Okay.
But we've done the letter thing. I mean, are we going to threaten to put him into the penalty carceral?
Well, we'll work with the city attorney to provide the appropriate notification and take the appropriate steps.
Without a conditional use permit, he really has no business.
Right. Without meeting the conditions of his existing conditional use permit, he really has no business.
At that location.
At that location, Mr. Wilker.
I just see, you know, I'm reading the penalties here, and, you know, it's a $500 penalty and something, you know, violation committed each and every day. You still got to force the person to do something along, you know, to make it happen, so I don't necessarily see the issue going away, you know. Unless there's an ultimatum of some sort that says somebody's coming in and removing everything, and, you know, I don't see that.
But I think this is part of the process, it has to happen before it goes any further.
It's our job to just ultimately make the recommendation because we, this board gave him the conditional use permit with these stipulations. He's no longer following those or never was, and at this point, we've exhausted all efforts and opportunities to try and work this out in a somewhat civil manner.
Yes.
And at this point, I just don't see that there's any, any other course of action. I mean, I felt like the night that we were here, when he was here, you know, and it was like, let's, we're willing to put this on hold and try and get it figured out because we don't want what's going to happen, happen. You know, he's a good businessman, good valued businessman in this community, and we didn't want what ultimately is, I feel, is going to end up happening, you know, and it's unfortunate.
We don't want to stop any business in this town, none whatsoever.
No.
But if he is getting away without fulfilling his needs, what's saying that ten others aren't going to turn around and say, "Well, you let this guy go that far"? We need to stop it somewhere.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
In essence, I think it's almost a dare that...
Oh, yeah.
You know, pushes to that point.
Yeah.
I don't know if I disagree. It's just, I worry about the backlash, and I guess, I hope the city council or the city's attorney has some sort of anything planned on this, because he's going to march his attorney right back in here. You're not going to deal with him. You're not going to sit down with a cup of coffee and say, "Hey, let's get this thing done, move on." And it's going to be another legal battle. And if you take this step forward, I would hope we're ready to go through that battle, because it will get played out, and I'm just, I'm very fearful that the city's going to look like the bad guy.
To some point, the city's going to look like the bad guy, no matter what. I mean, it's just the way it is. But if we don't draw the line somewhere, we need to start, this was said once before, somehow we need to start policing some of these conditional use permits, because it's never really been done. And we need to start doing that, otherwise it's just going to get out of hand.
We'll be a bad guy to a small population.
Yes.
Once the facts are out, the majority of the population is going to agree with the city.
Right.
I agree with you guys. I've been to enough of these. I don't know how that rope got this long anyway.
Yeah.
And I consider him a friend. I just said, "You should have just sat down and had, come in here like this with, 'Hey, look, nobody would,'" you know, and just, like we're talking.
Yeah. I've worked with Jason for years.
Just got in that corner, and then he won't come out.
Right, and I...
I'm not speaking for him, I'm just...
Right. No, he called me before he got his attorney involved, and that's the first thing I said, "Make an effort. Come and talk to us, let's work this out, we can, we can work this out, keep it going."
I agree with you guys, you let that, and I'm not speaking other than just chatting, but you let it go as long as it could go.
I'm right there with you. I graduated high school, three years out of them, four years out of them, giving scouts the other one stays in the game. His ex-wife, his parents, her parents deliver right next door to us. It's all over the time.
Definitely wasn't easier way.
Yes.
Drawn into it, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution revoking the conditional use permit.
You've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When's the next city council meeting? Wednesday? Next up is Hosington Kegler?
Kogler, Kogler, I think the Kogler Group.
I'll say it right.
Well, get it by the end of the year, right?
I mean, no disrespect. The group.
They go by HKGI, actually, that's much safer.
Don't you put that out there.
We will next time.
You name on the record, struggling.
Hosington Kogler Group, Inc. We'll do that next time. So, we worked with Laura through the stage of providing the diagnosis and annotated outline to move forward with our zoning and subdivision ordinance. They have provided a quote, a maximum quote for the completion of that work, which I believe is, correct me if I'm wrong, stages three and four, or, thank you, past three and four of what they had originally imposed. And that's not to exceed $30,000 of budget for this year, with $35,000 for private contracts for planning commissions. So, it's within what was budgeted, and this also goes to council on Wednesday. I don't know if you want to send any message to the council, maybe just through your liaison regarding moving forward with the process.
Well, from my little perch in the whole process, I see some value in going through I don't know if $30,000 is the right price or not, but putting together the comprehensive of these plans with these folks was, I mean, I wasn't overly involved in it, but it was a very positive process.
I think it's the very first, this is the very first action step in our comprehensive plan, so here we are.
It needs to get done. No question.
And actually, I was really happy with the way that she has taken kind of a completely different look at how to organize our ordinance. I know that we always struggle with, so backyard is in two different places with two different kind of definitions or set of qualifications, and parking is in two different places, and yeah, it's crazy.
Is there a difference in the amount of time it's going to take? Do they have their estimated timing? Is it done individually? Almost kind of suggests that you could pick, that's for the five modules, so it's the past, bring it forward, go through the five modules. Could some modules be selected and not others? Could you take it like cafeteria style, or do you take it all five modules?
I did talk to Laura about that, and we will work on the administrative and procedural items all during the other four modules, so that hopefully, when we finish up performance standards, a lot of the administration and procedural stuff will already be together, so that would not be a separate two-month process.
So, that could potentially shorten this timeline by...
Exactly, yeah.
If you took them as one chunk rather than as individually.
Yes, exactly. Yep, we did talk about that. Because I think I also, you know, we need to do this within the budget year, and I think we were not going to make it by December if we went...
Oh, sure.
Yeah. With ten months from next month, we were not going to make it. So, we just talked about how to shorten that up and get it done within the budget year. So, it can be informational only. You could give feedback to Lani and Dwayne if you feel there's, you have something you'd like them to let the council know about, or we can leave it at that.
I agree with you. Needs to be done. Try to clean everything up, simplify things, structure things.
We need it easier to use for the citizens, not just us. If we tell them to go look at, you know, ordinances, they come back and think, "How am I supposed to read this? There's two sections that talk about the same thing." It gets very confusing. There's only one guy I know that can read it backwards.
That's why it's important to have him as a partner.
There we go.
I agree. I think, you know, we've come this far, you know, with the comprehensive plan, and this is sort of, you know, you call it two sides at the same time, and this is completing the process. So, now we've got comprehensive plan, and then we have the ordinance that dovetailing with it. Having the senior groups involved, I think, is good for the city.
I agree.
Kent London had to pass me my own note. My right.
I did know you had forgotten that, Laura.
I had completely forgotten that. So, another thing I talked to Laura about was having an opportunity to do a workshop with the commission. We're looking at April 22nd, which is not your regular, you would still have your regular April meeting. I think it's maybe two Mondays later, potentially starting earlier than 6:30, and meeting at the Public Works Building where we can kind of spread out at that big conference table. So, if the day looks like it's available for the most part...
You know, we're going to be able to do that, and I don't know, we would have available three or four hours, or do we need more than that, or...
Hopefully, not four. Hopefully, not four, but maybe if you could start at six and plan to not go any later than nine.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay. So, oh, okay. All right.
It works for me as long as I don't get punished for it.
Okay. Gotcha.
I could make it work.
Okay. All right. So, I will get back with Laura and let her know, and then that will be our next meeting with her, will be a commission workshop. We will post it appropriately and let the public know where it's going to be.
But we'll still have our regular meeting on the...
Yeah. We're having a regular meeting, and then we're having a workshop. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. There was a reason I gave you the no.
Any else we need to discuss, gentlemen? Go ahead and join the meeting. Thanks, Laura.
Are the mics recording off?
Well, the mics are off. They're not, nothing's being recorded.
Okay.
And it's pretty obvious from where I'm sitting. At least I've done it.